Yeah.
Hey Karina, can you test your audio?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We're just gonna keep.
Well, any commissioners online, please begin with you Karina.
Sorry, I just turned audio off, so she might, she might have just got the tail end of that.
Karina, you wanna do roll call?
Oh, Karina Brown.
Brett about.
Brett Swenson.
Brett Shane.
Nick Henske. Staff wasn't even.
Uh Levi Roberts, city planner.
Tom Dickinson, city engineer.
Anyway, so I'm recording.
Town Ligo, office specialist.
Thank you, and then I'd like to also recognize, uh, Mayor Larry Jacobson as well. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to the first item on our agenda, which is to approve the, approve the agenda. So do we have any motions to approve tonight's agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion?
And can I add my motion?
Please.
And accept the minutes.
Okay.
Previous meeting.
We'll go ahead and, uh, any discussion for that? And with that, we'll, uh, take the motion to approve the agenda as presented, as well as the consensus to approve the meeting notes from February sixth, twenty five, which makes me all in favor? Karina?
Aye, aye.
Uh, any opposed? See no opposed, that'd be five yeses, four noes. Okay, great. We'll go ahead to move to item number one on the agenda, which is a public hearing. For the, for ordinance twenty five two rezone parcel three two two seven four located at fifteen hundred west, twenty six hundred south from residential R two to commercial. Levi, do you wanna open up for discuss, or?
Chairman, this, do you wanna, uh, state whether or not Troy's voting?
Oh, that's right, with, well, since Karina's online voting, then Troy is not.
No, no, Troy, Troy voted, yeah.
So I would basically say that Commissioner about.
Well, I'm a voting member of the, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, that's.
Bless Troy, bless, uh, bless Commissioner, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so, so this is, this rezone is, um, on Wesley Nelson Farm property, fifteen hundred west, twenty six hundred south. So right there at, at the corner of twenty six hundred south and highway D nine ninety one, uh, just south of twenty six hundred. You can see the, uh, the property there, it's a, a, almost an eight acre property. This is just an applicant's statement from what he submitted with his application, the, the, the purpose and need for, for the rezone commercial develop, the developer wants, uh, property for development, um. The, the benefit is for commercial opportunities. Uh, that's, that's probably all you say about, about that, you, you can see that on the screen, um. So as far as the general plan goes, the, this, uh, this is in support of the general plan, the future land use map. Uh, shows, shows us his commercial medium to high density residential. Uh, the uh, land, land use goal one taught, I, I, I won't recite the whole thing, but it, but it talks about a uh, encouraging a mix of uses, commercial, residential, light industrial. Um, land use goal two points to using, using the future land use map, which I already mentioned, and, and other goals, principles, and projects for, uh, to, to, to guide land use and growth decisions. And then commercial and economic development goal two is, um, points to a sustainable economic base and providing tax revenues to increase local and increase local employment convenience of shopping. So this, this application, it, it, it does, you know, definitely support these, these goals and the future land use map. These, the existing zoning of R two, you, you could argue it also fits within that medium density residential. But, but the, but the commercial opportunity here with it being on the highway seems like, uh, you, you know, it, it, it seems like the, the right zone for this location, uh, to have, to create that opportunity for for economic development for the city. So with that, uh, the staff's recommendation is to approve this rezone ordinance twenty five twelve. And with the findings that the, uh, proposed commercial zone designation, designation is compatible with commercial and medium to high density residential designation of the city's adopted future land use map, and the rezone was for commercial and economic development goal two to create and maintain a sustainable economic base for Nively City, they'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment convenience of shopping. Uh, I did notice, just, just so you know, that one of, uh, one of the applicant's representative looks like he's online, Trent. Um, I don't see anyone, anyone else is with, you know, from representing the applicant. Uh, but, but if you wanted to ask any questions, I think Trent, Trent could speak to those.
Yeah. Did we have anyone sign up on the roll? Obviously not, or any submissions to you, Levi, in general, or any public comments? Okay, well Trent, we'll go ahead and, um, hold off if that's okay with you until maybe we open up a discussion. Or if you'd like to say anything about this particular parcel in the rezone, maybe we'll hold that for the discussion consideration part, if that's okay with you.
I'm okay. No, I'm okay waiting till the discussion.
Great, thank you, okay, well with that, we will close the public comment period for this agenda and move on to item number two, which is discussion and consideration, uh, for the recommendation for ordinance twenty five twelve rezone parcel three two two seven four located at fifteen hundred west, twenty six hundred south from residential R two. Obviously, Levi just presented this specific, um, item and staff's recommendation and details. Um, Trent, do you have anything you wanted to say before we get into discussion with the commission?
Uh, no, we appreciate staff's thorough, uh, review of this and, and, you know, we're, as, as the future agenda items come up tonight, you know, we're thinking bigger picture here, so this, this definitely ties into the next stuff we'll be talking about as far as the cohesive plan for all the Wesley Nelson properties. So we just, we appreciate staff's recommendation and, uh, yeah, I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Okay, great. And you, Trent, with that, we'll open it up to discussion, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, making motion to recommend approval for ordinance twenty five dash twelve, rezone parcel zero three two two seven zero 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 four, okay, at one fifty west, twenty six hundred south. And this is a general or two to commercials.
Thank you, Brett, so Brett made a motion to rec for approval of the recommendation ordinance twenty five two rezone of the parcel. Um, as stated, um, from residential R two to commercial.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Karina, is Karina gone?
Karina's still on?
I, yes, I vote yes.
Oh, okay, I just wondered if you need anything to add before we take it to.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and, uh, with that, I think we're ready to make a vote, all in, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twelve, uh, any opposed? Nope, so that passes five in favor, zero opposed. Right? Item number three then, uh, moving to item number three. Discussion and consideration for the recommendation for ordinance twenty five seven amending Nively City Code nineteen two forty mixed use residential zone RM adding a five point two acre portion parcel, parcels, um, three two two seven two and three two seven one located at fourteen twenty five west, twenty six hundred south to the RM location map. Now, I know we discussed this in the last commission meeting, these parcels and this, these projects, but I'm, Levi, if you had uh, maybe you wanted to give us a quick, a quick recap from the last meeting, just to.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'll give a, just, just, just a quick recap there, I mean, I, I didn't provide this presentation at the last meeting, it's, there was, there was a public hearing on this item, uh, but, but just as a reminder, it's, it's been, it's been a little bit there, so just, just to bring everyone up to speed. Uh, so the applicant is, is proposing a rezone of, of a portion of property, and I'll, I'll kind of orient you with that on, on the next slide that's just north of, of the pre, previous item, uh, twenty six hundred south and or, and the planned, uh, Heritage Drive. The the current RM zone only allows to, to rezone property to RM if, if they're on a, uh, the map, the eligibility map. And so this first item is, uh, a recommendation of whether to add this, this property to the map, which would then make it eligible for, for rezone. Uh, the, the applicant provided, uh, a concept plan, which is, is really a reflection of an existing preliminary plat application for a townhome development in the area, and this, this is proposed to be a, a portion of that, of that townhome development. A, a five point two acre portion. Uh, the property, just as a little bit more history, the property was recently rezoned from residential R two. Uh, the property, just as a little bit more history, the property was recently rezoned from residential R two to commercial on June eighth of twenty twenty three. And it also includes a portion of an area that was recently approved for Nibley Marketplace Concept Plan. Uh, that was, I believe in twenty twenty four, I don't have the date up on the screen, but uh, the, give a little more context what, uh, from the applicant from the app uh the applicant's statement that they provided with their application. Uh, what's the need of, of the zone change, changed residential to join residential RM? Um, the public benefit is to create more uh first, first time home buyer housing opportunities that uh again, housing opportunities to support the general plan. Um, how they anticipate use is appropriate for surrounding area. Have residential RM zone to the east and commercial to the west. Uh, this last question, uh what public infrastructure is in place to serve the type and intensity proposed use? If needed, could the infrastructure be reasonably extended at cost of property owner or developer? Heritage Drive needs to be built for the commercial development, that needs to be coordinated with Nelson Farms, the commercial developer and the city, I mean, it's TIF in parentheses. Uh, the the, really, the, as far as the general plan goes, and this is, this is right in close proximity to the last um item that was on the agenda. Uh, these, these same goals I, uh, staff feels apply and it, and it's the same future land use map, the commercial medium high density residential. And again, trying to balance between commercial residential and light industrial uses, you know, the city does, does have a vision for, for a balance of all those uses uh. The and, and, but looking at economic development opportunities and, you know, the limited opportunities within Nibley City currently. So just kind of getting into that a little bit further. Uh, both the existing zoning of, of not R two, R, RM and commercial are consistent with the future land use map. Um, designation for this parcel, commercial immune to high density residential. So I think it could be argued, you know, either one could be in, in support of that. Uh, however, the general plan encourages a mix of uses and, and and at this point, there's very limited commercial use in Nibley City. Uh, in gen- in general, you know, based on, based on staff's experience, there's, there's limited areas where commercial really can thrive within Nibley. An additional commercial development would, would support the goals for, for commercial and economic development. And it's, it's apparent, you know, with this site, that there is, there is some uh potential for, for commercial development here. Um, so just to orient you a little bit more, this is the, this is the current RM, oh. Change that, this is the current RM zone where my cursor is, the, kind of the tan area there. And it, and this red area roughly is, is what's proposed for the RM zone. This is just an overlay that shows the the uh current uh preliminary plat and, and the layout of that that you see, so kind of what, what they've intended. And, and to be clear, this, this application, if, if, if this rezone approved, it doesn't, it doesn't automatically approve this preliminary plat, but this is what, what they've uh put is, is they've intended, it's currently under review, this, this application, this preliminary plat application, uh staff, staff is uh coordinated with the applicant on that. Um, but that, but you can see their, you know, townhomes for this area is what their intention is. Uh, just as additional context, this was in front of the planning commission last year. Uh, was this uh commercial uh proposal for, for a concept plan proposal that, that showed this area with, with commercial uses. And with that, it, it's, it's apparent that there is some potential for commercial here with Heritage Drive, with its, with its proximity to, you know, twenty six hundred south and to the highway. Uh, there, there is some potential for commercial there, that the staff feels that the city, you know, should take that in, into consideration with, with this application. The oh, that is I think a duplicate slide. So, you know, both the, both the existing zoning and the proposed zoning is, consists on the future land use map. General plan encourages a mix of uses, the uh, the modern income housing plan does does include a strategy to consider areas to rezone for densities necessary to facilitate production of modern income housing. However, there are limited areas in Nibley to support viable commercial and economic development. Um, and, and these are tail roadways, Heritage Drive and twenty six hundred south has the potential to support access for commercial development. And and, you know, given this recent concept plan, which it, it's understood that, that plans change, you know, with property owners and developers. But but this area uh seems appropriate for, for commercial, and so with that, it is staff's recommendation to recommend denial of, of this disordnance that would add this area, uh this RM application map to the to the Nibley City Code. And I guess I'll, I'll leave out item four for now, but really, this was all within the same, same application for both of those items.
Okay, thank you, Levi. Um, we'll open it up for discussion amongst the planning commission. Karina, did you have any thing you'd like to discuss about this item in particular?
Um, yeah. What, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, Levi, you're recommending denial?
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying that you recommend that it not go from residential to commercial?
No, that it doesn't go from commercial to residential, so it's currently zoned commercial.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's currently zoned commercial and for this, for this item uh that I're recommending, and it, and it really takes two steps of one, the question is do we add it to the map for the RM zone as an eligible uh rezone area and two, do we, do we, do you recommend this area to be rezoned? The item right now is, is whether to add it to the map.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Karina?
Uh, no, thank you.
Troy?
Earlier in the application, it, it, it mentions um if uh is I'm, I'm assuming that's um uh referencing tax incremental financing? That, is that actually that, that's what it's referencing? Is that a developer carry or a city carry? Uh, who's carrying that one?
Oh, I mean, so with, with taxing or financing, that's, that's typically through a community reinvestment area. I will say that's not really what's being considered with this application. But I, I think what that alludes to is, is is the community reinvestment area uh potentially providing funding for that, for that infrastructure. The, the way that that is uh carried out is again through tax, through tax increments, so so as, as property values rise, then then you take the increment of, of the, of the tax, taxable value there.
Yeah. Depending, right, uh more people would have higher tax base and that would get paid back. But, uh, the resident decide not so much, so I'm just.
Yeah.
How that would play into there.
That's a good question.
Go on, I'll, I'll think about some. Brett, did you have anything?
No, I'll just say having a good developer, I understand the how important this project is to be developed. And I also understand how important this to the city. And we need to really consider all sides uh of this and very complicated situation in my view and I, I appreciate the, the staff and their their viewpoint on this and the, and the their one view, uh, so they will, they, they, they I, I mean, we'll talk, trust our judgment on that. Where?
Um, just some clarification, um it's mentioned the, the lot zero zero one, isn't that curched already? The one in the, okay, and I know this is zero zero two, it's so we're just adjoining those two pieces and the one?
It's, what, what is being uh proposed is it's really a portion that affects both of those properties a, a little bit, primarily zero zero two, I believe, zero 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 two. Uh, there's, there's a, a, a small sliver of, of the other property that's, that's included here. Uh, but, but it would be staff's recommendation that if, if the city, I, I'll, I'll point that out, that it's, the city did want to move forward with this. And, and maybe that, you know, this speaks a little bit more to the, to the next item. But if the city did want to move forward with this rezone, uh, it'd be recommended that that it wouldn't split any, any lots, any parcels that whether through lot line adjustment or through um subdivision that, that they would be be one piece, yeah, they, they wouldn't be split.
Be based upon the development. I mean, or miss, doesn't.
Right, I mean, so I guess, I guess that depends on, on the decision of, but, but it's likely that the, the road is going to be needed both for the commercial and for the proposed residential or, or, you know, it could be, I, it, it's probably going to be needed for both of those uh of those projects and be utilized for both of them.
So if it's approved, road could be shifted or moved direction as long as it's broke or eliminated?
Uh, no, so the Heritage Drive is a master plan road. Yeah, so according to Nibley City Code, they, they do need to provide uh that master plan road, roadway connection. Uh, we've had, we've had different discussions in the past of the alignment of that road, and this is this is where uh, and, and through the concept plan and where the city has said, yeah, this is where the road should go. Through that concept plan approval was kind of the last time the city said, yep, we want the road in that location. But but no, I, Heritage Drive is, is a planned kind of frontage road along highway to nine ninety.
Troy.
Yeah. Well, well, it's, it's already zoned commercial, the area at the top. What's on the screen now is, was a previous approval of a concept plan. Uh, the red, the red is what's pro- proposed to change from commercial to, to RM. The remainder would all remain commercial in, I, I, in either case.
But they could have.
They could, they could have commercial uses, they are, they are allowed in, in RM. That, that's not what they've shown that they're intending on doing in their application, but that is that is a possibility.
Thing for me, I mean, outside of the decision like this that we make up here that truly affects the public health and safety to kind of re- reiterate Brett's stand, obviously these months are you have an applicant, an indoor landowner that has a vision for their property, but we also have to learn from the city and the city's needs. Um, and for me, it's like, you know, commercial in terms of land use, you know, it's best, the highest and best use of of um the potential economic opportunity of any person. So I, I kind of just did some independent research myself of like, you know, this kind of five acres, how many theoretically, or how many, you know, townhomes can, could we put in there and just, just did a basic like property tax? You know, a game to the city, and I did something similar to a couple of commercial buildings like in Providence nearby, I know there are different sites and I did it. But, but what kind of, what my findings was, it was basically just from the property tax uh analysis alone, they're basically uh zeroed out essentially. So to me, so what that told me was it, even if a commercial development of this size makes one penny in sales tax from, from the city's benefit, that's, that's kind of the curse, this, and also so um, that's kind of how I was thinking about this in terms of how it's gonna be, uh, administering my personal load, this is like, just thinking of the city and the, and the residents of Nibley. Where, I mean, what do we have? Do we even have fifteen commercial parcels in total?
Oh, yeah, you asked me about that, I, I started, I started getting into that.
So soon. Yes. These decisions were tough, I think, say, trying to be respectful to all involved. And for me, especially since we've had this um commercial cyclone as, that we reviewed and approved, really very and so we, that's where I'm just internally like, I don't even know if we've given this a long time to just, to see it, it could be successful. Years, right? And so, yeah, I mean, this is it's hard to consider, you know, the site when you're thinking about, you know, the will of the applicant and developer like you're saying, but also just trying to advocate the needs of the city and citizens of Nibley as well. So yeah, it's easy. So, and that's kind of my piece for this specifically. Does anyone have anything else we don't want to clarify or any further questions?
I just want to say like, I, I agree a hundred percent where you're kind of coming at it. Said, my, my only citation is with the other plot that we just discussed, getting some commercial and having those three lots with commercial. Uh, is there enough population around these commercial sites to justify enough development to fill up those three sites? Or does this site go undeveloped for another fifteen years because there is no desire there because of the population here?
Yeah. And it, yeah, it is a chicken or the egg thing, and you could counter that or do it to, you know, if a scale, the development of this scale come, you know, eventually becomes realized, all the vacant manor. So it is, it is the classic. Okay, no, you Brett, I mean, you, you being a developer yourself, you have once, okay, right, where you've seen that experience, right, and, and like businesses, right, like you have to imagine they're casting you know, hundreds of feet of net for households, they're looking for a mine. Yeah, that's a good. Karina, did you have anything else?
Um, I'm just curious, what if it remained commercial, what commercial um project was originally planned for that, for that parcel? Or is the applicant in the audience?
I, I can address that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the applicant would like to take some time.
Yes, I, I mean, do, I can answer that question, I'd be happy to take just a little bit more time to talk through the project in general, if that's all right.
Sure.
So uh, as far as the commercial goes, uh, there's nothing specifically planned for those, in fact, when we do these commercial layouts like this, and, and this wasn't done by myself or enzyme engineering, but we've done one similar and we were working with the commercial developer on this because they're tied to residential and commercial. When they master plan these. When they master plan these out, um, usually they have an anchor store, a grocery store, some sort of big box store, something like that. And that's what starts then the whole development of a commercial process there, and so, uh, you want the big. Commercial anchor to come in and then you do a bunch of outbuildings, so they're just concepts. But those change as specific people want to come in, you know, you get a McDonald's or you get a Chick-fil-A or you get a. A car wash and, or you get, um. You know, whatever, a bank, you know, or, or a bunch of small fast food restaurants, like, so as each of those. Different types of commercial come in, they'll come in and, and look at what lots, outlots are there, but then they do their specific site plans for those. So what's shown as far as around that are, are very loose concepts of what could be there, but. Generally speaking, there's not, we don't know exactly every one of those outlots, what they will be. Um, so that, I hope that answers your question there to kind of talk about the, the project in general is. Absolutely, we'd love to have commercial there, um, as we worked through the process, the original. Uh, what was the four lot? Split of, of these that created the, the, the commercial that you just rezoned south of twenty six hundred. Um, and the three lots that were north of it, the original plan, working with. Um, previous concepts and the previous staff was a different alignment of Heritage Drive. And as, as we've worked through this and we, we get more and more into the details and working with Tom and Levi, uh. It's been decided that this is the, the alignment of Heritage Drive. Commercial broker's okay with that, the residential developer is okay with that. And, and so that necessitated a change in our layout. And obviously, the commercial plan that was shown has the current layout of Heritage Drive, um. But it just made the, the, the residential a little bit tight because of, uh, some of the. The area and zoning requirements that are part of this, and so we've worked with the commercial, um, developer. He is on board and approving of this current layout and the rezone here. And that's why we presented the other area south of twenty six hundred to show. Not only like, hey, we understand that you're losing some potential commercial base in this five acres. But here's another large chunk of land that we're willing to commit to and, and put forward. And also work with a commercial developer that says, yeah, you know, you're helping us out here because this works better for the residential. Here's some more area that if the growth does happen, that you can move into and start growing into immediately because it's already now zoned. Commercial, uh, final, final thing I just wanted to throw out there is kind of from just a, a design constructibility and flow of a development. It's never great to have commercial right up against residential if you can avoid it. And we're going to have industrial in north end for a portion of this, um, and so I know that goes against some of that, that standard. Practice of, of layout and design, um, but if you can split those by. A road like Heritage Drive. It, it, it gives a good buffer between what is someone's backyard. And a fast food drive, drive-in that's open late into the night and the complaints that come from that. And so we feel that this is really just a better overall product. For the residents that will be living in here and not having, you know. Parking lot lights in their backyard on all, all hours of the night or, or traffic going through there on a fast food that's driving in late and the speakers and. And that type of, uh, situation.
Need anything else from? Commission, any other questions or discussion?
Just north of it, oh, it's commercial, it's the, the welding shop and a couple other commercials, so. I don't know how much of a lot to ruin there. Just be aware of that.
Right.
It'll be surrounded by. Well, it's, it's saying by, leaving, um, commercial land is. Scarcely, and. For, for that reason, that's, um. I'll just, no, we're done, I'll go on three.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion. Uh, to recommend denial. Orders twenty five dash zero seven, many nineteen point two point zero four zero. Mixed residential zone RM adding a five point two acre portion parcel zero three dash. Two two seven dash zero zero two and zero three dash two two seven dash zero zero. Working twenty five minutes, twenty six hundred south to the RM application, application map.
Okay, so just for the record, Brett, um, recommend denial of orders twenty five seven. Please hit code nineteen twelve forty. Mixed use residential RM by adding the five point two acre portion of. Um, parcels three two seven two and three two seven one. Uh, to the application.
I'll second.
Segment by Claire. Um, any further discussion?
I'm cussing staff on this because. I have mixed feelings on most ways, I understand most ones, but.
I, I'm, I don't, I think either way is fine, um. You know, like, uh, on the RM zone, even though the current plan is. Townhouses. Zone still does how many commercial there, so it's not like we're damaging commercial, it, it is rezone.
Yeah, Breanna, anything further?
No, thank you.
And, and similarly, Brett, I mean, I feel like. You know, even if we vote to not allow our two, for these, portion of these parcels to. Go from, to, to add our two to the map, just effectively reason these, proportion of these parcels, right, um. I feel like it would be a bit of a, um. Too early of a decision to make this choice without even letting the market decide. You know, what the viability is of. What, what a pre-existing, pre-existing zone commercial area is, you know, it could be a couple of years, whatever, and then. Have to revisit this and then, yeah, maybe. This discussion, but to. I just need to be a bit narrow, narrow. Not minded, just in terms of the temp, the, the timing context of this, to just not let, let the market decide there out. What the opportunity is for Nibley in this area.
May, may I ask a question of the, the commission?
Yeah.
So, so with, with that discussion, I totally understand what you're saying there, especially where it was so recently, the last two years rezone. But doesn't that handcuff the property a little bit where we actually have a viable residential ready to go in right now? And you, you're. In that argument of saying, well, let's wait and see, maybe it's five years, maybe it's two years, maybe it's ten years. Aren't you then essentially putting handcuffs on this property? Because what if it doesn't, where you have a product right now that can go in? And, and I don't want to use the word condemn, but you, you're essentially condemning that to time to see what happens.
Trent, I fully understand, uh, your comment and question, that's why, my, me personally, when I mentioned. Speaking earlier, like, outside of. You know, decisions we make, whether it's us or council or management for them as well, you know, these types of decisions. Outside of something that's directly related to public health and safety, these ones I have to. Again, we have applicants and the landowner, we have this vision of. The site and their property, but we also have to represent Nibley, the city and the citizens, and citizens of Nibley. And that's a holistic point of view, especially in terms of economics and. Taxing as a, as an entity, right, and so, yes, I, I totally understand your point, Trent. And, and, and my point of view strictly personally myself is, is kind of our priority stated, you know. Uh, commercial zoning in terms of its potential economically for, for a city, right? Typically, that is the, the highest level of zoning available for, for the benefit of the city. Except to both property and sales tax, so yes, I appreciate your comment, I do. It's, it's amazing, right?
What, what's this going to say, Council?
Uh, if, if you, if you make a decision on this tonight, it would go on the eleventh of April is their next meeting.
Al, did you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm wired with cities concerned. So imagine someone coming saying, yeah, this and that, if the market's not there, you're saying, no, we've got to do this. The problem is, no one's been involved in those discussions, and I'm the only one who's been involved in those, those discussions. Hey, you, those discussions have been very tough. No one here in the staff, no one here has been involved in those discussions, I have, I just spent an hour using the phone. With two developers. We talked about Reddit's variation. And there's always a comment. We were talking about this, there's a statement. Pigs get rich, hogs get slaughtered. If we ask too much, everything collapses and falls. And the reason this got changed around is because the grocer wanted to switch the develop, the direction of the store. That's really what it came back to. And so that thing is. Very challenging, I'm not gonna lie to you, it's, it's a challenge because you're trying to get everyone in there. And the point here is. I will tell you that, that property, uh, will just sit. There won't, there won't be anything. Um, because, and I'll, I'll say exactly what you said, we can't get anyone to go that far away from making. And that's why we proposed the swap lots. And who you would respect, we have done this. Honoredly, by the city, now every time. We have about a variable waiting seventeen thousand years. I mean, we have built a lot. And we're gonna get anything. The thing that we're doing here is we've got several different peoples involved and trying to work together. And we start demanding this and saying it's gonna be this or that. That makes it unworkable. Because now we're giving up the money. And so that's. Tell you how you vote or you're like that, you can do it. Into kind of reality. And for people, it can, I, I just sit there and I, I have to chuckle a little bit how. Somebody's come to here and they're like, well, it's gotta be that, it's gonna be from the staff, and I'm like. I just, I just sit there and I, I hope you would say, let's work with the property owner to make this work. Because if it doesn't. It's gonna blow up and I'll be able to, the last days, that'd be an extreme challenge. Trying to hold everything together, I just wish I could tell you a tenth of what's going on. And just tell you, trying to work this out. And appreciate what we're trying to do here. But we haven't got any appreciation, it's just say, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do that. And we're like. How can we do that? How can we do that? We got, and you've got a great point. We've talked about this for eighteen months, we have. You want to sign twenty some, twenty six acres of commercial land? Do you think that's really gonna be a sellable opportunity for commercial retailers to come in here? I mean, that's part of the challenge that we try to sell is to say we're building that for rent. But that's not fair, it's one of the issues that we're dealing with, but the grocer. Is to say, we hire these residential, because they look at all the residential units. They say, we got to fix the units. So that's an important thing, you make the grocery store there, that's a big deal. So we're trying to put that together. So if we had to hold that console, it will cause some challenges, so even voting. In making decisions on how. Team in the next three or four days. As things are finalized, one person tonight will be involved right in the middle of those negotiations. And did, they gave exactly how that can be. Because we cannot put ourselves into a terrible position. And to say, well, we got this commercial property, but we have no time to do that. We need to be nervous. We don't need people telling us what to do, we need parties to say, this is what we got, this is how we'll do it, that's all we've been asking for. We have quite got it. It's been countless what to do. And it's been a challenge. And it's been really difficult. I would be tempted to say, let's sit down and work through it. We can walk it through it, what I can tell you. But some of the things I can't, you know, obviously are non-public, I can't disclose those things. You say every topic. But you can't, you know, the challenge here is having. Something, you know. Here's saying, well, you gotta do it this way, and, and, and I'm sitting there going. How do we make this work? How do we make this work? We had twenty six acres of commercial land, we just gave several acres up and we don't get any return, but. Trying to make it attractive, business income, if it's too big. It will collapse, I promise you, it will collapse, so I, that's my note to you, so, anyway, I'm gonna say. Let's try to do negotiations for the next week and it will depend on what happens, so, so.
Just one question left. You're saying that commercials, your commercial in the next few days, you're ready to go. First before residential, depending on this five acres you zone from commercial. So commercial is your first step and then residential is your second option.
They would always came to us and commercial and swapped those properties. They were, we didn't go to them, they said, let's do this, and so we said, you know, like Trent talked about. It's hard to have residential backed up through commercial. That's probably, this is where's your dividing, you know, where are your issues, like, you know, how can you divide it? No one thinks about that until you have problems down the road. And so they came to us and said, let's do this, let's swap this and make this work. The biggest thing on that where. Is I just wish, say, when you pull on anyone's. And he was laying, you know. I straight up with it, these things are very tenuous. And I just wish I could just lay it out, say, can you see what I ran? This is what's happening. And I just, I think it'd be a great thing, but. If we're stuck with all this other stuff. I have big concerns. Really big concerns, you, you know, the, you know, I wish Stewart was here and say, okay, you're gonna put twenty seven odd acres in commercial, can you sell that? So I wish someone would block the main first. And say, what's going on there, before they go out, say, well, we don't want this. Because I need to, I'm trying to make it work, the city. Then, then it's been day and dark. It's been really hard because we haven't been this bored. We really haven't, so.
Thank you.
I kind of just want to point out. Similarities, um, like you mentioned, we've seen some commercial lots in, in Providence. Um, so like if you look at Macy's and the surrounding area, that's zoned out commercial. Uh, that's smaller than this area. And, uh, it was forever after Macy's was built. Before other commercials started coming in, and it really wasn't until like all of the. Condos and townhouses then being built on the backside before that development started taking off in the front. And I just kind of.
Is that, we're not going all the way with the, or the, that's your supply? Is that the back piece too?
I think that might be very all of it.
That's.
Looking around at the Macy's.
Probably close to thirty eight. I'm pretty, just got fired.
There's a lot of vacant land there. There's a lot of vacant land there. And uh, again, kind of going back to like that, my question, if is. If this land is sitting vacant and the city is responsible for paying back. Right? The the financing of this room. Uh. Now there's no income at all.
Yeah, and I'll just clear it up that there's no, there's, at this point in time, to my knowledge, if anyone wants to speak to that, there's no obligation for that. For for the city's. Contribution, not definitively at this point.
That's all I'm going to.
Well. That that hasn't really, uh, be- because the, because the developments haven't come through. That that hasn't been. That that hasn't been decided on who, on who pays for what. Typically, the developer pays for master plan roads. That's, that's what's in our. That that's, that's what's in our standards and that. Um. Now, it needs to be proportional and it needs to be, uh. There needs to be a nexus and everything, but that, that's, that's typically what. What is required.
Not to anyone.
I just want to remind everyone that we are just a recommended, recommended body. The. City Council will. Can. Overwrite anything we do or support it, whatever you want to do, whatever they want to do, but. But I do want to say in defense of the staff that. There's been a lot of tongue. Discussions. On this. It might even, looking outside in more than any other development we've ever had. So. I believe they have been listening and they're considering all the options for. Citizens or the developer, everyone that's involved. So.
So.
Yeah. Well, let's go ahead and put it to a vote, just to, just as, as a reminder, um. Brett, um. Uh, voted to deny the recommendation of the.
Motion.
Or the motion, um, for, um. For the recommendation of ordinance twenty five seven admitting to add these to the map and secondly, Claire, so just, just as a reminder as to how. Uh, the vote is in front of you. So I don't know if you want to go individual on this one, there may be some questions that we'll go maybe individually. Karina. How do you vote?
So there, so sorry for another question.
Yep.
So Claire and Brett voted to deny staff recommendation.
That's the motion. That's the motion.
Oh, the, the motion to deny the staff recommendation.
No, deny. Deny the proposal. Uh, to to add this to to the map.
Oh, okay.
Which, which is consistent with staff's recommendation.
Oh, okay, okay. I vote nay.
Yes.
Yeah. Well. That would be three votes for yes, two votes for no. Okay, moving on to item number four. Discussion and consideration for the recommendation for ordinance twenty five eight rezone. Of a five point two acre portion parcel three two two seven two and three two seven one located at fourteen twenty five west and six hundred south. From commercials uh to mixed residential. Procedurally, how does this? Since we just.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't really have any additional background information. All, all the same. Uh, findings are applied, that apply to the previous item, apply to this one. Uh, it is staff's recommendation for denial for this rezone. For for those same reasons, I. I don't. I don't really need to, I don't feel like I need to go into any more detail there.
This is pretty much.
I can say. Yep. Well, yeah, the, the difference here is this, this is a recommendation to actually rezone it. The, the previous one would just open the door to a rezone. Where this one. Would recommend whether or not to rezone it. So they're, they're connected. But because of that restriction in the RM zone, it was necessary to have the two, the two items. But for the same reasons, uh. And and findings that, you know, that were stated earlier, it's, it's staff's recommendation to deny this. This, this rezone.
Yeah. Dress in prior item. Um, yeah, I'm in motion. Uh, recommended orders is twenty five hyphen zero eight, rezone five point two acres of portion of. Zero three hyphen two two seven zero 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 three two, excuse me, also zero three. Two, 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 seven, zero, zero, one. Okay, dead fourteen twenty five west. Twenty six hundred south, commercial to. Mix residential. Fifty nine.
Okay, so Claire, um, in motion to GI, the recommendation for ordinance twenty five eight. Rezone of a five point, five point two acre portion. So three two two seven two and three two two seven one. Located fourteen twenty five west, twenty six hundred south from commercial to. Next to. Second. My Brett, any further discussion? Karina, did you have any further discussion?
Uh, no, thank you.
Yeah. We'll just go ahead and vote individually again.
Well, this one, you could. You can come back later and say, hey, it's not working this commercial and we can. Like, some of that costs them more money.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is an application fee with that. Yep. But yeah, at any, at any point, anyone can apply for, for a rezone. Or the city could choose to rezone it without an application if. If the city were, if the city chose that, I mean. Yeah, I mean, if the city wanted to right now, I mean, it's not typically what happens. We, we typically, uh. Respond to applications, but the city could rezone any, any property going through the proper process.
May I again, just for clarity's sake, since the question was brought up again? Um. I, you know, I know we, we just got recommended denial on the first one, but. Yes, it can be rezoned, but please understand that. We have a preliminary plat application in that has townhomes there and ready to go. So. So the, the first denial and obviously this one that follows will now then, if we can't get this through a city council, necess- necessitate. A complete redo of the residential application that's already in, the monies that cost and go with that, and the loss of the townhomes that, that go along with that. So there, there would likely be no. No. Rezone. In the near future because of that, right? Because we're actively working on the residential because of the decisions made tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that there was an application submitted that. Didn't meet the existing zoning, so that did necessitate this application.
Any further? Karina, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, go ahead and go to a vote. Karina, how do you vote?
I'm nay.
Troy.
Nay. Yes.
Yes, both yes as well. Three votes, yes, two votes.
Okay, item number five. Discussion, discussion and consideration for conditional use permit for white. White tricity, same.
I think so.
Um, a research and development business located at twenty three forty south, Griffith Drive. Levi, do you want to go ahead and introduce this?
Yeah, um, so, so, uh. Uh. Business license was, was submitted for white tricity. Which is, which is located actually just north of, of the property we, we just discussed in a commercial zone. Um, on, on Heritage Drive there, twenty three forty south Heritage Drive. And I'm just going to read from the applicant, just so you know what, what, what this business does. The office primarily does research in the area of power electronics in order. To assist in the development of standards for wireless charging systems for electric vehicles. This consists mainly of computers, research and simulations using software. Computer software team also makes presentations to standard. Bodies on their findings. Occasionally, they test some of the products which consist of wireless chargers for golf carts. These tests are using electronics testing equipment to test voltage and current. Um. Proposed hours of operation are nine to five, Monday through Friday. They're not proposing any changes to the building, parking, landscaping, any, anything within the site. Uh. It is located within a commercial zone and this. And, you know, adjacent to other commercial properties as, as well as Thomas Citizen Charter School. Yeah, just, just to the east. Uh, but this, the, the category of use, research and development. Is a conditional use, which is why this is in, in front of you today. Uh. Just a little more context, as you can see where it's at there. I, I already kind of described that on the screen, but. There at the corner of Heritage Drive, Nibley Park Avenue, just off. Highway eighty nine. Um. So looking at Nibley City Code, uh, a conditional use should, shall be approved if reasonable conditions are imposed to mitigate the reasonably. Dissipated deschard funnel effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. Um, just to remind you with. The, the recently adopted parking ordinance, uh, parking requirements are actually not imposed. In, in a case like this, of go with, with a business. Going into an existing building, not new construction, so. So parking really isn't, isn't a consideration here. Uh, the. And, and just in general, this, this, uh. The staff doesn't see any significant detrimental effects based on the description of the business of, of, of what's going on there and, and, and the. The site context, it, it really seems to fit with. With the context of, of that. Of the area. Uh. The only recommendations that staff would provide is, and, and this is. This is, uh. The fire inspection is, is already required with. With a. A business license, but, but just to be clear with. Uh, staff's recommendation to require that conditional use permit as well. As well as a building inspection and the building inspection is just. Just to ensure that the building is safe and meets intended use and occupancy. So that, those are the only conditions that staff recommends. So staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. Um. The findings that the proposed use compatible, compatible with the site context, there's no anticipated detrimental impacts to neighboring properties. To ensure its site is. Fire safe, fire inspection is required to, to ensure the building meets intended use and occupancy. Building inspections required and the recommended condition, the building must be inspected by county fire marshal. Certifying compliance with fire code and a building inspection must be conducted to ensure the building meets intended use and occupancy for the building.
Great, thank you. Discussion, Ms. Commission. Katrina, do you have anything?
I'm sorry.
No, I don't have anything. It sounds good.
Troy.
No, no questions are positive. Right. This chairman, I may, um, make a motion to approve conditional use permit for white tricity. At city. A research and development. Development business located at twenty three forty south Heritage Drive with. The recommended conditions stated by staff.
Thank you, Brett. So just to reiterate, uh, Brett, uh, recommended, uh, to. Sorry, come on on. I'll just do that again. Sorry. So correct, it's a motion to, for approval of the conditional use permit for white tricity. A research and development business located at twenty three forty south Heritage Drive with the, uh, conditions. We have second. Troy seconded. Um, any further discussion?
I think it's. They're going to do wireless charging stations for golf carts.
Yeah, that's part of it.
They get that off.
This is, this is more the research leaning inside of RMV.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they identified it as a research facility. But research and development is. Kind of the category, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
If any opposed. That would be five in favor. All right, moving to item number six, favorite thing. Workshop on three, so we're back. We couldn't get enough. Levi, updates, please.
Yeah, so I, I did include in the packet a draft ordinance and I, I'll just say it's like, it's a rough draft draft. It, it's a, it's staff's first stab at this. Not necessarily a recommendation at this stage. But just to put in front of you to, to try to get at some of the discussion that has been had at previous workshops. And so I'll just, I'll just summarize and we can bring up the exact language on the, on the draft. Uh, but. But summarize some of, some of, or each, each of the recommended amendments to the RM zone. So one is. And I, I know there was different discussion on how to, how to handle this, but what's in the current draft is to amend. The design standard and, and require rear loaded. Um, ingress and egress for multifamily housing. Uh, there was some discussion of whether to allow some front loaded, uh, but, but maybe have. Uh. Like separation between driveways or, or limit the width of driveways. We, 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 we could discuss that, but at this point in time, that's, that's what is in there, just for, just for sake of discussion of. Just requiring rear loaded access, um. Uh, next is removing the RM application map, so. One of those items on the agenda wouldn't have had to. Uh, been discussed necessarily, but. But we, we, we talked about that. I, I guess I won't go through all of the reasons for all of these. I think we've, we've discussed and had the back and forth, but I'm just going to summarize. Right now, kind of what's in there. We get into the. Uh, more, more of the reasons later, but there, there is. Although it's hard to pull those apart for some of these, so. So there is a slight modification to the setback standards for rear loaded housing. So currently. Uh, there's a twenty foot setback, front load, or front yard setback. And a fifteen foot rear setback. Uh. For. Within the RM zone. It's, it's recommended that that be flipped if it's rear loaded. See the twenty foot in the rear and fifteen foot in the front. Um, there, there was kind of an interesting case on this in, in Ridge Lane Park where. They, they have some. Uh, they have some alley loaded, uh. Single family units there and they have, they have a twenty foot setback, but with a fifteen foot setback. It makes it. A little bit, the driveway becomes. Kind of not very usable because you can't really fit a car in fifteen feet. And it, so it becomes just that, a driveway, it doesn't really become a parking space. So, so if you flip it and you allow a little less setbacks, you still have the same building envelope. If you do, if you do front loaded. Uh, you have that twenty foot setback, then you can have, you know, you have enough space for a driveway if it's rear loaded. So that, that's kind of the reason for that. There's, there's some different ways you can do that, but. Um. Reduce the building height to forty feet. So currently it's fifty feet, but if it's, if it's within three hundred feet of these existing residential zones, there, there was some. Discussion and worry about. Its proximity to, and maybe three hundred feet is. Is a. Is a big number, but, but that was kind of to be consistent with this other three hundred foot buffer. So be reduced to forty feet if it's, if it's close to those residential zones, so three hundred feet. Which is, which is the building height max for, uh, most of the, most of the residential zones in the city. Um. And then it. There was, there was a. Desire to modify the language that requires single family within three hundred feet of adjacent single family. So instead it'd be, it's, it's limiting construction to two stories and no more than a hundred feet in building length as a transition area, so it doesn't necessarily have to be single family, but. It, it allows for kind of that transition into a single family where you don't have something so big and imposing right, right next to a single family neighborhood. Um. Remove clubhouse pool or splash pad from list of required amenities. That was discussed. And then there is some language there that, that probably needs a little bit of work, uh, but it's kind of our. First stab at a fee and blue option for required. First stab at a fee and loo option for required open space and amenities. And, and the way it's. Currently crafted is amenities, you, you could do a fee and loo for amenities. Just based on the value. For open space. I, I have to bring the language up. There's some logic there, but I, I got, I gotta, I gotta bring up what, exactly what that is, but there, there's some standard for, for the open space as well.
This is, this is on smaller lots, I mean, smaller, less than forty acres, right? Is what we're talking.
Uh, they could, not necessarily. I mean, it, it could be less, it could be more that. There's no, there's no minimum or maximum in the RM zone. There can be, right? That, that, that's, that could be another. But, but in the current. In the current standard, there's not. And just kind of one more bullet point here. That. I, I, the. I think it would be worth. Looking at the RPUD standards, once, once the. If the planning commission wants to move forward with some changes to the RM's standards, I think. We should consider applying. Some, at least the ones that are applicable to the RPUD code as well. But we can, we can work on it in the RM and then. Once there's some consensus there, maybe we'll fold in and bring in things to the RPUD as well. Cause a lot of these, it doesn't make sense to have in one and not the other.
The fee and loo. We were talking about, there was a context of like, does it? Any, quite frankly, any development that's directly adjacent to our, where we have pre-existing amount of open space. Is open space on open space? Uh, the idea, we always want to push or raise fee and loo. Because the proximity of our, a pre-existing network of, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, and like. Let's see here. Trying to find the.
Open space for open space sake, where the loo might be better option to target back to a bigger consolidated area.
I'm hoping I didn't leave it out of the packet, cause I'm not seeing it here. Did I not, did I not put it in the packet? That's, that's an issue. The draft, the draft code changes. I think I might have left them out of the packet. That's my pro, that's my bad. Cause I put in the goals there right after the White Tris City thing. I think I messed up.
It's there.
Is it there? Why am I not finding it?
Are you, are you talking about actually the? Formal code, it's.
The code, yeah, the code changes. I know, I know I put it in the agenda item report, but I don't. I think I might, may have left it out of the packet. My, that's my bad. Yeah. I'm, yeah, I, I. So the. Yeah, but what, I do have a draft. Um, I, I inadvertently left it out of the packet, but it. What I described is.
Yeah.
It summarizes that.
I think everything proposed, I think it's. Summarizing it. Most of the salient topics and discussion points we've been. Haggling over, I guess, within this zone. Fundamentally, I still always cling back to. Based on maybe what Tyler's. Uh, thoughts were in terms of the concerns about this zone, like. I would have been curious to know, had we asked. What council would have done? Like, do they, does the council legitimately feel like this is a viable zone for Nibley?
They sent it back to us.
Because we've not seen this zone in practice. We don't know. But.
They looked at the one on twelve hundred west. That is once the RM makes. We denied it to an R two and they sent that back to us because of the. Our mix felt like all that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we do have the, so, um, the Wesley Nelson Residential. Parcel is R two.
RM, yeah.
RM, excuse me. Yes, thank you, RM.
Yeah.
So we'll see that in practice, but we just, that's where it's hard. It's like. We've been haggling over this zone. We don't even see it. In the real world yet.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to understand, cause we have the RPUD. We have this zone. To understand, you know, in what, i- if, if we're going to have this zone. Where does it make sense to do this versus an RPUD? In, in my, in my mind. Maybe this is for smaller scale, higher density development and RPUDs larger scale. Maybe that's how we look at it. If there's, if there's places, so maybe there's a maximum. Yeah.
Yeah, minimum forty?
Yeah. So, so maybe, maybe we have a maximum.
You need a twenty. Make this maximum. Well, what do you do? I was thinking ten. That was, that had been dropped.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think this is a middle between R two A and. Are you, are you?
It's, it's higher density. Yeah.
They need the setback. And also the night. The car that will match up more next to residential.
I mean, do we, do we need to rethink this? Hey, can do this, but, um, altogether where it's just like, this can only happen directly adjacent to. Something like that, and people would be. Cause remember, the whole idea was. The. The application was at some island, layer down by the industrial part of Nibley bordering Hyrum.
Yeah.
And we're in Tyler's reservation was. That this thing would be on, we, you know what I mean? It's off on its own, we don't really know. It's like, well, kind of, we don't, well, it's true. But we don't know. If it could be successfully, we haven't seen it. So maybe.
But we, Nelson's want. In our hand.
Well, they.
That's north of it, commercial.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Maybe it's like. I mean, that could just be a part of the. Consideration when we legislate these decisions, it's like if it's directly adjacent to my apartment, it will be.
It's setback in the backyard is fifteen feet, so they're really close to the. Commercial. And they said they want a buffer, that's not much of a buffer.
Probably twenty. Oh, yeah.
If it's changed, but theirs is already through. So they're fifteen feet.
I mean, do, do, do you all feel like? Ten acres is, would be a maximum to you, your gut instinct, or would you?
One thing, one, one might get served as we start messing with. Which so qualifies based on size.
Yeah.
See, oh, we're starting to manipulate that, right?
Yeah.
Or it's partial, and they start carving, carving it up, so they can qualify for their, for, you're right, for others.
That's a good point. That's a good point, yeah. Yeah. I, I, I think, I think Brett raises a good point. I, I think it could. It's. I mean, a rezone decision is a case by case basis and is it, is it too? I think if you think it's too big. Then it's too big, right?
So, yeah. Right, like.
Right.
Yeah. Because, because, I mean, because it is a license. Any consideration.
It's really, it's really not on the map. Don't matter. Find them really anywhere, is it?
Well, it, it doesn't, it doesn't specify, right? So, so the future land use map. It currently uses terms like low, medium, low, medium, high density. Yeah, and. We've, we discussed that with the general plan is, as we kicked it off, that we'd like in the update to define. At least what, what that means. What is, what is low density? What does high density mean?
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Well. Certainly, certainly see your name. So I think what the council did was continue, uh, the proposal to the south and tell. Like you. Better understood what this RM thing is all about, so. We are looking for your help on that, so thank you for. Wrangling this out and we'll wrangle with it too.
Yeah.
Uh, but the same hesitation, I think, that planning commission had, and that is. Uh, maybe we should better. Understand, cast the John to die on the RM zone before we get comparable. So I'm not, I'm not sure we kicked it back to you, Claire. It sounds like we're shirking from our. Responsibilities, but we would like your help in figuring it out. Yes.
I guess I worded it for you.
No, no, no. You're great, thanks.
I, I do like, I do like the adjustments, the height. And the setback. The back, or setback increase. In the rear loaded.
I, I like how faster, see, you see a problem.
Right.
In real life. And you make a, make adjustments.
Yeah.
And also like the two-story, so it's not like three or four stories. Next to a condo or condominiums.
Yeah, right, so. Maybe these are incremental improvements. I don't know if they get at the heart of some of people's. Reservations with the zone. But. But yeah. Yeah. My kid, my kids loved them when they were younger.
And I really think just moving forward, if RM. And some of it may just, I still would, wouldn't, want to get some more feedback from council on. What they think this zone should be. But really then it's just up to the legislative bodies to decide where it actually belongs.
I like what you proposed, the hundred feet. That's still pretty long. But not really long. You measure it.
Might be a five-plex.
Yeah.
At most, four or five-plex. Some of these are eight-plexes behind us.
Yeah.
They're pretty.
The, the distance.
What do we think?
I like all, I think all the changes, um, recommendations. My, my one question was on, on swapping the setbacks. So like, I, when I, when I'm picturing rear loaded, I, I have a whole bunch of different things that I'm picturing, um. I'm trying to think of like a local example. Um, maybe not the prettiest, but like. Um, in Hyrum, on like three hundred south. Where the old Turkish sheds are, you're familiar, there's like some townhomes over there. You jump like boobs? Yeah.
Oh, way over.
Yeah, it's, it's fancy. Yeah. Yeah, there's some townhomes back there that are. I guess you could call them rear loaded. On kind of alleyways, and there's no setback there. So we're talking. More like here at Ridgeline. With. I, I guess my question is, with the setbacks, does that include the main building? Or any building? So like if there was detached garage. Is that fifteen-foot setback or is that can be? Just off of that, like.
So the, the setbacks for detached, um, accessory buildings are different than. Than for the main building and those are set by the underlying. Well, I guess the RM is, is a, is a zone in itself, but. I believe the way we have it in our code, and if we don't, we should clarify that. That's a good point. I, I believe we have. Similar setbacks for the RM as we do for others, which they are. Less, so like, for example, a, a detached garage is one foot in the rear and three foot on the side, unless it's over fifteen feet. And then it's ten feet. Is what, is generally what we have and it needs to be in the rear yard.
Still clear.
Yeah. So, so. I guess the question I have is. Should I bring this back for consideration, um? You know. Get, get the verbiage right, even though I don't have it in front of you right now, but, but. Get, get everything kind of cleaned up and bring this back for public hearing and consideration, or should I bring it back for another workshop? With, with the words on, on paper, what, what would you? Like to do? I feel bad, cause. I thought I. Gave them to you and I didn't, but.
Is there an, an upcoming council meeting or council's going to further discuss this before we will?
Actually, now that I remember it, Levi. I referenced the proposal to the south. From memory. I believe the council adopted your recommendation for first reading to set up all of that to R two A.
R two A, yeah.
And noted that if there was going to be. Something besides R two A, specifically R head. It would be after. We understood the. We, we had come through the, with your help, the RM zone.
Right.
So the council adopted, we, we often. Very often take two runs at things, first reading and second reading, so adopted your recommendation on first reading for all of that property to be.
Right, what's, what they did continue was whether, was whether to add it to the map. The area as RM.
I, I.
They didn't, they didn't, they, they continued that item, but, but they did for first reading. Go with the planning commission recommendation, which was R two A.
Which is.
Yeah. I mean, realistically, there's no. Uh, to me, there's no issue with allowing Levi to move this forward, even to the point to where we make a, have a public hearing. Open it up for discussion and consideration to the simple fact that. That doesn't mean we have to start applying RM anywhere. Right, so if we're, at a minimum, we feel like we're. Making our comfortable. In, in the concept of what it could be, right? Uh, that doesn't mean, so it's gonna start literally applying it here. Still get to make that decision as to the location.
And, and if you're not comfortable in the next meeting, you can continue it.
Yeah.
You know. I know we've already, I know, I know we've already continued to discuss this, but if you're like, you know what, you need to do more work on this, we need to look at this. We, we, you can continue it and we can bring it.
I honestly don't see.
Cause we still have that option to deny an application if one comes. And then even if we recommend it or approval. Um, and council denies, then that's good feedback for us.
If you feel that they will come.
Yeah, that's kind of the point.
Uh, so be prepared to have to deny it. Something we create.
Yep.
Well, if they have a reason to change the code, it's gotta be. The council.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, it would just, it would be a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, right, if that's your concern, then, um, do we need to entertain the idea of identifying? Zones. Proxim, or proximity of these?
We should consider that.
That this would make sense.
Give us some control.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, you tell people no, and they're gonna say why.
Yeah. We don't get there.
Exactly, that's, that's not good enough.
Right.
Political answer, it might be legal, legally okay.
Yeah.
You could, you could, this is just thinking out loud, something you could say is this. This shall only apply in areas designated as high density residential or. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be, that would be good there.
And then, and then you don't necessarily have a map there, but. But we have the future land use map, which we're gonna amend again this year.
Yeah.
That at least limits it. Right. Right.
We, we could need to revisit this depending on what the general plan, that way, in the definitions. Renew this again to.
Redoing this again to fit the interpretation.
Okay.
That help, like?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I think, I think next meeting, which is until the twenty fourth. I'm not gonna put it on the back burner, but. Got a little bit of time to, to. Comb this over and, and get it ready for public hearing for the next one. Right.
Good, awesome, okay. Um, moving on to item number seven, planning commission goals for twenty twenty.
All right, uh. So. Uh. Little bit late on this, but, but the planning commission, we usually like to set goals near, near the beginning of the year. Uh, the, the first thing we'd like to do is, is look at the status of the goals we, we made last year. And you see the summary on, on the screen there, there's, there's some things that we, we didn't quite get to, there's others that we completed. Uh, we didn't quite get to the access connectivity intersection spacing standards. We did complete the parks and rec master plan, active transportation plan. Um. The modern income housing plan, we, we completed strategies that were. That were identified there, we're compliant with state code, good there, um. Uh, we have started the development of the general plan. And this, this highway one sixty five study that's referenced here is in progress, it hasn't, hasn't started. Yet, uh, it's a little out of the city's hands, but the. But the funding's there and it's, um, it's about to kick off. And then we have started this process with, with Cash County Development Town Center Master Plan. Uh, just some other things of note that were accomplished as updated parking standards. And by the way, these are typically outside of. The administrative process, um, I guess it's, I guess it's a. Uh. It's implied that, that the planning commission's going to. Make good decisions on, on, on those, those types of processes, but thi- this really is, is going beyond that and. Looking at our plans and, and codes and ordinances. Um, there was an update to the ADU, ADU ordinance that, that the planning commission worked on, and, and this was adopted. And this, that was in support of the modern income housing plan. And then there was an update to open space subdivision ordinance that included updated standards for R two A zone, those, those are just kind of some highlights of. Of some things that were accomplished twenty twenty four. Uh, going forward, these, this is the goals that staff drafted. Uh, and, and I'll just point out, if, if there's anything else you want to add or change to this list, that's, that's really the point of this agenda item. So first, completing some of these items that were already listed in twenty twenty four, the access connectivity intersection spacing. The highway one sixty five corridor study, which is through a partnership with Cash County. And, and the Nibley Town Center Master Plan, kind of a, a recent development is. Not just coordinating with Cash County, but also with the USU Landscape Architect Program. We had, we had a good meeting today. With, with a couple of professors on that and some. Uh. There, there's, there's some possibilities of getting some assistance from students to, to get. Uh, help with their design studio. To help envision the, the town center area. And they, as part of that class, they do public and stakeholder engagement, which I think is, is also valuable, so. Anyway, that, that's something we're, we're hoping to pursue. Um. And continue to implement strategies of the moderate income housing plan. It's about time that we probably ought to look at that and update it, because we're getting to the point where we. Either implemented or already looked at almost everything in there, and so what do we want to do next? I wouldn't say we necessarily, we don't need to do it this year, but that might be something to look at. Next year, um. The, probably the biggest one here is completely development of the general plan. Uh. And we did just kick off that, that process. Update the RM and RPUD zoning standards, which we're working on right now. Review and update design standards for commercial and institutional uses, these. Uh, these standards are pretty outdated and. Phil, there's, there's a need to, to look at these and, uh, it was actually just. Pointed out in a city council meeting. And recommended to do that. Um. And then this last one, which we just. Just getting a summary from the legislative session, updating the code for compliance with state codes, so just keeping our code up. Up to, up to par with what the state requires. That's what we have. There's more we could potentially do, but. Trying to be realistic, so. Any, anything else or any, any modifications to these? Just wanted to put these in front of you to kind of have a clear. Idea of where we're headed this year. Other than ob- obviously all the applications and everything we receive, this is kind of anything we do beyond that.
It's certainly. Heard that come up in the. City council.
Yeah.
You see for patients.
Yeah, it, it could be a, a big project, uh, to do that. It's likely to be a pretty big project, and we need to. Decide how we want to approach that. Because it's, it's kind of, those standards are kind of a beast. And how, we can at least. I think we can start with a discussion of how, how we want to approach it. How we, how we see commercial development. And, and Nibley going forward and then. Starting that, yeah. So. Any comments or anything, or? Everyone good with those?
Sure. On, on the intersection. We, with the developer, supposed to. Fail. Decide, keep the money.
Yeah, being, it was. I don't think that's been decided. That's a good, that's a good comment. Thirty-two hundred and, and highway eighty-nine ninety-one, or highway one sixty-five, Main Street? I, I, one thing I should say is, this year we're doing the general plan, uh, next year is. We're likely going to do the transportation master plan. And I'm not saying that can't come ahead of that. But that could be, I, I know that's kind of a hotspot for traffic. So it, it should be something maybe should be looked at. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. Good point.
Can I give you an update on? This is all public knowledge, a council of governments proposal that Millville has made on that intersection. And they are. They, they are looking for, I'm not going to talk policy, they're looking for Nibley's support to make. Thirty-two hundred south and highway one sixty-five a full roadway intersection. Uh, they want to go straight east.
Okay.
This is not a secret, they've made cog applications, they're trying to get.
With a new bridge?
Yes, sir. A new bridge and everything, and. That would. Again, just information, that would mean Nibley would build part of that road. And own half of that.
So my, my just is take his money. Or build payment. That originally would have used to build out that. Access to one sixty-five. Let's spend it on something else.
Yeah, it is kind of interesting, right, that it, it narrows, it narrows out when.
You know, they, they have received money for engineering. Uh, one of the big questions is, well, there's already a bridge there. You know, comes down by the Maverick. What's wrong with that? And they, the city count, Millville was here, the city council last time. So what do we do with that bridge? We have two bridges, what, what, what? Uh. But I think the only way Millville can. Pull this off is if they receive cog funding. Which, there is a match, there's like a seven or eight percent match.
I can tell you what's wrong with sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year old drivers. Like today, going through there. Going to the rim, including my son.
Yeah, I found, found out kids weren't. Our daughters weren't going out to the light on one sixty-five, instead they were. Coming through the back of Millville, it's like, what? Why don't you go out to where there's a light and you can get on one sixty-five safely? Yeah. Takes too long to cycle through it all.
Quicker, yeah. And that's a good point. Not necessarily, I mean, head nods is, is good if you. All right. Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to this back of work.
All right, uh, just wanted to point out, general plan was kicked off yesterday. Because I think it's going to be a great process, there will be, and you know, Claire and Nick were, were at the. Um, the kickoff meeting, there, there's separate, uh, one-on-one meeting with Troy, and if, and Brett, Karina. Or, you know, if any of you want to, want to have one of these kind of one-on-one conversations to, to talk about kind of your. Your viewpoints. Uh, happy to facilitate that with consultant, just, they're trying to get a variety of different perspectives on it right now, or if there's. On top of that, if there's people that you think should be. Consulted for a one-on-one conversation that would contribute to that discussion. Also, you know, send him, send him my way. Uh, we're, we're.
Send us some questions. We could give some thought to, I'm, I'm better if I have time to think about it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Just do it on, do it on the spot, then you can, then you're ready, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll request that from the consultant just to be consistent with, with the other ones and. Yep. For sure. Okay. I think that's all, oh, the, the one other thing, I, I didn't quite get to the flag lot. Uh, items, I, I started on it, but. That might be ready at the next meeting, uh, but. We'll see how far I get.
David, Alan, Larry? Good? I'll just give you a turn. Thank you.
Go through. Bye, Karina.